I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March the 1st, and we will start with our public statement, read by Commissioner Thomas.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones is with us virtually, and Commissioner Thomas and I are present here in the NatU Hill Room. So I'll start with the department updates. Is Ms. Kelly with us?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Monroe County COVID-19 community level remains low, but transmission is noted as being in the high level. There are seven Indiana counties in the medium level and four in the high level. COVID concentrations and wastewater have taken a sharp decline as of February 25th. Flu levels remain at minimal levels. As of February 24th, there have been zero influenza-associated deaths statewide.
That's nice news about the flu. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything to ask or comment on?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
None. Thank you.
Well, I have something. I want to give a huge shout out and big thank you to Ms. Kelly and to specifically Kathy Hewitt and Melanie Fischlag on her staff. They worked tirelessly to put in a big grant proposal to the state, which has made up to $25 million available for fighting opioid issues among all the counties and communities throughout Indiana. This is a competitive grant. We worked very, very hard. We worked collaboratively with Centerstone, with the Indiana Recovery Alliance. I'm going to thank the city of Bloomington for offering, for pledging some support money as well as Cook Group. So this is also, the county has pledged money pending the award of the grant and approval of the county council, but the plan is to use some of the opioid settlement money that has been made available to us. But none of this would not, would have been possible without the effort of Ms. Kelly's staff. And some of these things are very, very innovative things I had never even heard of before, but for example, purchasing a machine that's able to, it's a spectrometer that's able to detect whether or not fentanyl or other drugs are in illicit drugs that are street drugs, and it takes just like one hundredth or a thousandth of a gram to test whether or not such substances are present. Looking at kiosks for drug takeback, again, for harm reduction, and just some, some things that'll be visible and available to everybody in our community. So I think that this is really a step forward, and I'm very, very excited about it. We should be notified May 1st whether or not we will get the money. It's being determined on a sort of a line-by-line basis in terms of these different kind of projects that we asked for, but I'm very optimistic. I think it was very well done, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other department with an update? Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. We are starting the Bicentennial Pathway Project this week, construction. As of today, we will be putting door hangers on every resident that is affected out there to begin the project. It'll be on our website for an email that you can sign up for project status updates. You can issue complaints, concerns that you have for this project, but we want to be as transparent and let everyone know the process and how we go forward through the construction season for 2023 for this project. The project actually runs from Audubon Drive to Pass Fire Station Hill on Old State Road 37 North.
Thank you. This is something that's been, what, more than a decade in the works?
Yeah, the project started in 2009.
Thank you. Is there any other department with an update? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items which are not on our agenda. We ask that you limit yourself to three minutes per speaker and that you identify yourself by name and whether or not you're a county resident. So if there's anyone in the NatU Hill Room who wishes to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium, or if you're online, please raise your hand. We're not seeing the attendees. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
All right. I move approval of two sets of minutes, February 22nd, 2023, and February 27th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was to do it or you were.
Okay. So are there any comments or corrections for the minutes? Seeing none, a call for a vote. Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
I move approval of the claim stock and accounts payable, March 1st, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Lettler here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Accounts payable for March 1st, 2023 is $776,580.55.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions?
No.
No.
Thank you. I had had questions earlier, and so I was pleased that Ms. Lettler got back to me very quickly on things. Appreciate that. So do I need to call for a public comment on, yes, on the claims? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a call for a vote. Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. I'll note for the record, we have no reports this week, so we'll move on to new business.
I move approval of an AT&amp;T Dedicated Internet Agreement, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, the amount of $10,583.28 over the course of three years.
Second.
And we have Mr. Krone here to tell us about it.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Krone, Technical Services Department. Kind of sounded like a broken record, but for months, we've been reviewing all of our service provider contracts, trying to identify anywhere we can come up with improved service or any steps to reduce costs. During our latest check with AT&amp;T for the Internet service they provide for our voice-over-IP phone system, it was recognized by AT&amp;T that they could offer us a new three-year term on a contract that reduced our costs significantly over the life of the contract to the tune of almost $15,000 over three years. The level of service that will be provided will be the same 10-megabit service we currently have, so that will not change. So this is merely a cost reduction, a cost reduction step that we're doing.
Thank you. It'd be nice if everybody came forward with things like that, wouldn't it? Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just it sounds like a great idea.
Good work. Yes, agreed. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Next item, please.
I move approval of a contract with Honeywell International for EBI software support, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, and an estimated amount of $1,136.
Second.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Krone?
Yes, thank you. The Honeywell software, known as Enterprise Building Integrator, operates the HVAC controls for the Justice Building and a portion of our showers building. That software has become problematic. It's giving false alarms, triggering workflows that aren't there, some different issues that the vendor needs to address and try to get straightened out. So this request is to approve for them to come on-site, a one-time agreement, to come on-site, go into that server and try to address those errors and get the software functioning properly.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
Well, I know that there have been HVAC problems in that building, so I hope this will improve them.
Are they providing any kind of a warranty on their work?
I'd have to check with that. There was nothing stated to that in the agreement, so I'll have to reach out to the vendor and find out what their intent is with that, if we have recurring issues with it. They tend to follow up. One thing that we should note, this software is technically beyond service life, and we're going to have to look to upgrade that software here in the very near future when we can get a new server put up for it to operate on. So we're looking at that as well. So this is an ongoing thing. So basically, we're trying to get enough correction now to keep us moving forward before we have to upgrade.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any idea how soon they'll be in?
I'm sorry?
Do we know how soon they'll be in to do this work?
As soon as we can get them, get this signed and back to them, they should be here within a few days.
Great. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I move approval of the Moncito Agreement for Website Accessibility Monitoring, fund name Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $22,800 over the course of three years.
Second.
Again, Mr. Krone?
Thank you. This agreement with Moncito, we're required to monitor all of our websites, social media sites, that thing for ADA compliance. Third-party software allows us to view all those sites and make on-the-spot corrections. Excuse me. We currently are contracted with a company now called Siteimprove through the end of this October. We reviewed this product that Moncito has. It does a better job of detection on the software, on the websites of finding other issues, so the interface is nicer to use, it's easier to understand. The other part to this, right now, our current agreement with our company is at $12,500 a year. So with this new contract, with this new company, that's actually a reduction, excuse me, of $5,000 a year to achieve the same goal. So what Moncito has agreed to do, since the contract with our other company doesn't expire till October, in order to go ahead and get us signed up, they want to go ahead and sign us up now, but not charge us for anything until October. So actually, we're getting 20 months of service on this first year for the cost of 12. After that, it would be an October-to-October agreement for the years two and three at $7,600 a year.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
This is such an important thing to have on our website, and I'm so glad that you arranged for this and you got a great deal. So thank you for your hard work on this. We have to ensure that all of our information on our website is available and accessible to everyone in every way possible, so this is great. Thank you.
Yes, and I actually had been in touch with Mr. Krone earlier in the week about, with questions, so I'm pleased that this is going forward.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Krone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item?
I move approval of an agreement with Indy Wall Padding, fund name Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $3,145.
Second.
And we have Ms. Purdy here.
Yes, thank you. I spoke with Mr. Kreider prior to him having to actually leave on bereavement, and he has managed to speak with Indy Wall Padding and arrange for this repair of 17 of the jail showers, which will epoxy the base floors for them.
Glad we're moving forward on this. Commissioner Jones, any comment?
Yeah, I'm also very pleased that this is moving along as quickly as we can make it.
Yeah, I agree, and I think it's a really reasonably priced project, so I appreciate that as well.
Yes, yes. A lot to take care of in that aging facility, so, yes, but I'm glad that Mr. Kreider was able to find something to take care of it. Is there any public comment on this? We have Councilwoman Hawk here. Please go ahead.
I wanted to make sure that there's some provision going to be made for ventilation when they're working with that epoxy. I don't know exactly what they would do to accomplish that, but...
I can't speak directly as to what their plan is, but I do know that they've already used this source of repair in the facility, and so I would understand and expect that they are prepared to conduct this work in a manner that's not going to cause the air pollutants for the inmates or the workers within that facility. I do know that some vendors actually have a device that will siphon the air out as they're working on the project, so we're very cognizant of the effects of the air quality on inmates and the staff, so appreciate your concern, but I do believe that Mr. Kreider and Mr. Gardner will be watching and ensuring that those issues are not becoming real for our people.
Is that all? Councilor Hawk?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm concerned about that. I know that there's certain precautions to be made.
Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Is there any other comment? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
I move approval of third-party lease and service agreement with Area 10 regarding rural transit.
Second.
Mr. Cockrell?
I'm going to defer to Angie on the description.
Oh, well, Ms. Purdy then, okay.
Yeah, this one too. Jeff and I both submitted this to staff for the agenda, but this is, this is a new document that Indot has created for us, and it just serves as a lease agreement between us, the county, as the recipient of the 5311 grants, and the transit provider whom you have an agreement with to provide the services. In addition to this lease agreement, you'll see also attached to the body of your packet that there is an additional item, which is a memorandum of understanding between the County Board of Commissioners and rural transit. And it's just kind of a taking on, it's recognizing the relationship between the two entities and recognizing the need for and requirement of internal controls and respecting each other's and primarily the county's internal controls.
Thank you. This is just formalizing what we've been, what we already have in place.
Yeah, this is actually just more of housekeeping for the grant that we have, and it is new. Indot has come, just came up with the new paperwork. We've actually had the MOU in years prior, but I had failed to include it in this most recent packet, so I thought this would be the perfect time to add it in.
It was fascinating reading through all the VIN numbers that are in the back.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And those VIN numbers, speaking of which, they don't include any of the new buses that they're buying, so those can be added automatically without having to come back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you take the roll?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
I move approval on agreement with Susan Brackney for Communication Services, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, and amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Cockrell, do you get to explain this to us?
Yes, this is an agreement to help organize your communications, and this, in the contract, in the packet, it is blank as to the dollar amount. We wanted to determine exactly what the county council had appropriated for this, and $25,000 fits within that, within that number. This contract will run till the end of the year.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think this is something that we've really needed. It'll help us out a whole lot, I believe, and I've known Ms. Brackney for probably almost 30 years, and I think she'll be excellent in this position.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas. Sorry. I'll wake up for something, look at me and say the other, "I'm over here."
More can be needed. Yes. All right. No, I haven't known Ms. Brackney that long, but I am so impressed with her work, and I look forward to working with her and thank her for this.
She's the woman who designed the "Let Us Be" yard signs, right, for the people that were fighting annexation, so, yes. Is there any public comment on this? Councilwoman Hawk, you still have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. Could you describe to the public what this contract will actually do, what the work is to be? Did you, could you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes, this is particularly, I mean, these are the general, and clearly, if something comes up that falls within these scopes, so it's not limited to this, but identifying and prioritizing opportunities for meaningful media and public outreach, creating original content, both digital and print, writing and design, outreach to traditional and non-traditional media outlets, developing and disseminating a direct-to-public messaging, media relations trainings for the commissioners, crisis management, and creating best-practice operational documents for these kind of communications.
Thank you.
And what's the total of the contract?
It is $65 per hour with an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Wow.
Thank you.
I don't think I voted in favor of this one, but...
Yeah, this was, this was approved during the 2022 budget session for 2023, so this was approved by the Monroe County Council. So just want to make sure everybody understands that this has been discussed and is significantly less than what was also proposed as a part-time or full-time position, I believe.
I just wanted to make it clear, since I did not vote in favor of this, that I continue to not be in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
I move approval... Oops, I have my mic on. I move approval of 2023 Sheriff Contract Agreement.
Second.
And is Ms. Turner King here?
I am covering this. She has a family obligation this morning. Now, this is a contract we look at every four years. This is a four-year agreement with the sheriff. State code requires a contract with the sheriff, and this is essentially the same contract we have approved for the past few times. It sets its salary, it sets the sheriff's salary equal to that of the prosecuting attorney's salary. I would say even before we were required to have a contract, we were allowed to, and we always chose that route because the other alternative had to deal with meal prisoners and savings on the meal prisoner, the prisoner meal costs, and that was not, never a route that we, that the county had chosen to go. And so this is a four-year agreement that sets the sheriff's salary with the prosecuting attorneys.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No. This is what we've been doing for a long time.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
It's just more of the how we're all interwoven and set up by the state government with things that we have to work together on. So, yes, is there any public comment on this item? And for those that aren't familiar with this, the state sets the prosecuting attorney's salary, so we do not do that. Seeing no comments, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
I move approval of a memorandum of understanding with Core Correctional Solutions, fund names, Reducing Revocations Challenge and Community Transition Program, fund numbers for 913 and 1123, in grant amounts of $28,500 and $21,500.
And we have Ms. Stride here.
Good morning. Becca Stride, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. Our department has actually come to you several times regarding this project that our department has been involved with since 2019. We are partnered with several agencies, but most, but specific to our county with Indiana University and George Mason University researchers. The goal of the project is to increase our clients' success on community supervision by trying to get ahead of any violations and addressing needs, behaviors that lead to revocation. The department has been working on numerous strategies through this project, but for the purposes of this contract, I just want to highlight the first strategy that we've been working on, which is providing our probation officers with additional training and support as they apply evidence-based practices when working with their clients. This contract is with Core Correctional Solutions and Melanie Lowen-Camp, whom we have partnered with for going on, I think, 10 years at least now. Melanie has been to our agency numerous times. She's a nationally-recognized trainer in criminal justice evidence-based practices, and through this contract, we are looking to do two things with her. One is provide our probation officers with two weeks of additional training that we tentatively have scheduled for the fall. We're calling it Advanced Evidence-Based Practice Training, for a lack of a better term, but it's just to provide our officers with ongoing support and training, since we know that evidence-based practices, especially in this field, are ever-changing. And then the second thing that this contract would do is Melanie would provide individual coaching for some of our probation officers. The gist of it is that she would be providing coaching in real time, so she would be observing client appointments through a virtual platform, and then immediately after the appointment, she'll be able to give feedback to the probation officer regarding the skills and evidence-based practice interventions that they used during that appointment. So again, this is just ongoing support and training for what our department's already doing.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just very pleased to hear that this is going forward, that we're one of five in the country who are continuing with this, and it sounds like it'll be a very valuable experience for both the probation officers and the people they're working with.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, I really like this idea of coaching. I think that's fabulous, because sometimes you can sit through a training session and not necessarily pick things up, so I think it's really a great program, and congratulations to all of you for working so hard on this.
Thank you. Yes, and this fits so well with what we're doing with community justice reform, and so I really appreciate this. I have to tell you too, because I was reading through everything over the weekend with the numbers that you provided, we actually put those into the grant application that we just sent in yesterday. So it was very timely to have this available.
Research.
Yeah, so I really appreciate that. Is there any public comment on this item? Councilor Hawk, did you have something that you wanted to say about this particular issue or item? Your hand still raised.
No, I had my hand lowered. I'll do it again.
Okay, great. Is there any other... Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Very good. Next item?
I move approval of the 2022 Community Corrections Grant Annual Report.
Second.
And we have Ms. Stride again.
So for 39 years, actually, this year will be, we're in our 40th year, we have received grant funding from the Indiana Department of Correction. As part of several grant requirements from the Department of Correction, I have to come before you to provide the county with just an annual report regarding the previous year's activities. This grant funds four of our programs: Community Corrections, Pre-Trial Services, and then two of our Problem-Solving Courts: Mental Health Court and Drug Treatment Court. In 2022, we received just over $1.5 million in grant funding from the Department of Correction, which primarily fund, well, does fund part of our program salaries and benefits for staff associated with those programs. Just a few highlights from 2022. The Drug Treatment Court, which started in November of 1999, last year had its 514th graduate. Mental Health Court, which started in August of 2015, at the end of last year, had its 23rd graduate. Pre-Trial, which started in 2016 as a pilot project, but is now a fully-certified program, has assessed over 10,000 defendants since the, since it started, and those are defendants that we are either meeting in the jail or in our office following an arrest, which we provide information to the court for them to make decisions about release and conditions. And then our Community Corrections Program, which includes our Home Detention and Day Reporting Program, served over 800 individuals. And of course, our Community Corrections Program, well, all of these programs are based as an alternative to incarceration. A couple other highlights from last year. So in October of 2022, the Department of Correction actually came to our agency to conduct an assessment of our programs, specifically how we're using evidence-based practices. This assessment is a new assessment to the Department of Corrections, so they had not, they hadn't used it before, so they actually asked our county if they could be their, the training site for their, their staff. We have not yet received that report. I'm bothering DOC every week, asking where it is, since that was back in October. And then another highlight from last year is that one of the challenges we experienced was, we had a lot of vacancies with our probation officers and field officers, but as of today, we are fully staffed. We had our last two vacancies begin their employment today. So hoping that that stays, stays relevant and, and filled for at least some time to come. I always try, since I have to come here every year, I try to keep something, some information fresh, and I decided that this year, I really wanted to highlight what exactly our probation officers are doing. Given that this grant funds their, many of their positions, I wanted to briefly share, what does a probation officer do? What are they doing in their, their day-to-day job? Of course, there's the administrative side of things that include data entry, documenting client interactions, collaborating with social services, filing paperwork, going to court, but the majority of our, our probation officer's time is spent working with our clients and applying evidence-based practices to ultimately help our clients change their thoughts and behaviors. Just a quick rundown. We have pre-trial officers and intake officers who are conducting assessments every day to get to know our clients and what their needs are. We have supervision officers that are taking a case and conducting additional assessments to get to the root of a client's behavior and help identify any drivers or thinking errors that a client might have that led them to the justice system. Our supervision officers are developing case plans at the beginning of supervision that set up what a client's supervision term is going to look like. We are constantly assessing a client's responsiveness, what unique characteristics a client has that may impact a client's success, and then we're adapting our approach to working with that client based on that, every individual's needs. Every appointment, we, we practice this a lot, every appointment, every interaction that a probation officer, or really any of our staff, have with a client, we are trying to make that intentional. We're trying to turn it into a learning opportunity to teach a skill, apply a cognitive behavioral intervention, and of course, build rapport. And then, of course, our probation officers are also responsible for keeping clients accountable to the court, the laws, and of course, the safety of our community. So it's a big ask that our probation officers are, are conducting every day, but they do it because we know that these things work. The grant also funds a few other vital employees to our department, including our support staff, who our clients, the first people that they see when they walk in the door are our support staff. So they are also trained in evidence-based practices, so that all of those interactions can be intentional. And then, of course, our field officers, who they are on-call 24/7, 365 days, to deal with any urgent violations that a home detention might, client might have had in order to keep our community safe. And while this isn't a comprehensive list of what our probation officers do, I, I did just want to highlight why this grant is so vital to our department and our community, because it is employing probation officers and staff who want nothing but the best for our clients. So we, of course, always thank you, the commissioners, for your support every year for this grant.
Very nice. Commissioner Jones, do you have any comments or questions? You're muted.
Sorry, I didn't think I had muted myself. I'm particularly pleased to hear that you're really actively trying to deal with people as individuals and recognizing that there are different causes that bring everyone into these situations, and different treatments are what is necessary.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and the staff for all your great work, and congratulations on another successful year.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that all the vacancies are currently filled, but also, like my colleagues, I'm, I'm really happy that you don't take a cookie-cutter approach to working with people. I think that makes a big difference and holds people accountable in a different way.
Thank you.
So is there any public comment on this? But thank you also for talking about what your, your officers do. It's important that people understand that. I appreciate that. So, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Stride. Next item?
I move approval of ordinance 2023-05, the Petticoe Bay Rezone.
Second.
And we have Ms. Krosilius here with us today. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. So this property is located in Clear Creek Township, Section 35. The property is currently zoned. We are looking at the open space, which is one lot platted within the Petticoe Bay subdivision. It is separated by two different ride-of-ways, so we are looking at three highlighted parcels that are considered one lot of record as open space. It's currently split zoned, agricultural rural reserve, and forest reserve. The site, the open space, is approximately six and a half acres. The area is mainly buildable, and it does have several carst features that are within the open space and protected within platted sinkhole conservancy areas. So this is just to kind of give you an idea of where we are. So we are south of Lake Monroe. We are located within the environmental constraints overlay area, and we are looking at a part of a subdivision within Petticoe Bay. So when Petticoe Bay was platted in 2001, it did not include these six properties to the north. There's a few more tax parcels that we see here. So part of the properties that we're looking at are not included within the Petticoe Bay. The petition parcel that's being proposed to be rezoned from forest reserve to suburban residential is platted. So a little difficult to see, this is what, the first page of the Petticoe Bay subdivision. There's a second page that zooms in on our, this open space. So this open space was originally intended to be a common area that contains septic easements for properties that are off-site. There are multiple utility and driveway easements to connect to those properties that are not platted in Petticoe Bay. And then we can also see the sinkhole conservancy areas and their buffers are platted. So this is just a detail, some of the properties that are not platted within Petticoe Bay were platted in a type E, so this is just an example. These are kind of long, narrow lots that are, for the area, they feel very much a part of the Petticoe Bay area. It is a gated community, but was not included in the original subdivision. So the intention of this proposed rezone is that five of the six residential properties in this area would like to absorb this common space, this open area, that they consider their front yard, they would like to absorb it officially into their properties. In order to do that, because these properties are zoned suburban residential, the area within the open space needs to be rezoned to forest, to, from forest reserve to suburban residential. We would not be able to make split zone lots of these, of these sizes, so that rezone would be required. The petitioners are, had originally going to do a lotline shift and not become a part of the Petticoe Bay subdivision. There is a homeowners association associated with Petticoe Bay, but they have decided that if this rezone is pursued, approved today, that they will actually go ahead and do a preliminary plat amendment to the Petticoe Bay and become a part of the Petticoe Bay I would like to note that the rezone request was originally for the entire area, it is still technically for the entire area that's, we're looking at, that's on the north side of Petticoe Bay. One of the owners that's on this side of the property is not involved with the land transfer. Because the open space is already split zoned between forest reserve and agricultural rural reserve, staff is recommending to leave the small portion of common space and let it remain forest reserve. So just a little bit of background information about the properties that are being, would have area transferred, just a rundown, most of these, you know, still had those platted easements. In 2004, those septic easements were actually not pursued. Petticoe Bay chose to construct a private, a private sanitary sewer package plant in this area. So the portion that is mixed use, or I'm sorry, mixed zone of the open space, AgRR and Forest Reserve, the AgRR was rezoned in 2004 to allow for that package plant. So none of the easements that were platted are in use. The sinkholes would remain protected within the SEA, but the, the septic system areas were never utilized. So I've touched on this. If this was approved today, the rezone was changed from FR to SR, they would pursue a Petticoe Bay subdivision preliminary plat. So a few site photos of the area. So this is looking from East Sailor Lane, looking north at some of the properties. It's kind of a larger-scale area, so it's a little hard to kind of comprehend the full, all of the yards and where the open space is. And some of these photos, you can kind of see, these are the driveways, some are shared, so those are within those easements, platted easements already. You can see some utility boxes, and in some photos, you can kind of get an idea of the depression of the sinkholes. So it very much feels, they all pretty much consider this open space as their front yards. Currently, the area is maintained by the HOA, so if it was rezoned and then transferred to the owners, they would be responsible for the maintenance of this area. So some questions that have come up along the way from the plan, through the planning process, there was questions about could the areas that were transferred, could they be further developed because the lot size is increasing? The answer to that is because the property is within the Eco Area 1, they would be unable to be further subdivided for, for future development. A few other areas, we did address, you know, the split zone. Because the open space is currently FR and AgRR, we've, staff has altered their recommendation to not include the portion that's in front of the property owner that's not involved with land transfer, and I do have a photo that kind of illustrates that a little bit better. So here, the, on the left side, this is the proposal of, of what the petitioners are wanting, so the full area that's across the road to be rezoned to SR. There's only, so after the land transfer, the open space would be the two parcels across the street and then one small parcel on the north side. Staff would like to not further non-conformity of the open space. Currently, the forest reserve portion of the open space does not meet the minimum lot size. The agricultural rural reserve area of the open space does not meet minimum lot size, so we are recommending not adding another zoning district to the open space. We would address the, the split zone under the draft zoning ordinance in our draft zoning map, which we are hoping, we are currently working on and hope to adopt within the next couple of years. So we are keeping tabs of areas that are split zoned to address them in the future. So for this rezone request, for the image on the right, we're recommending only the areas that would be transferred to be rezoned to SR. Just a few more questions here. So staff recommends approving this rezone request from forest reserve and Eco Area 1 to suburban residential and Eco Area 1 for the 3.7 acres, based on the findings of fact, subject to the Monroe County Highway and Drainage Engineering reports. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Jones, any questions?
Since the areas that are being changed are not going to be available for development, I don't have any real problems with this.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what I wanted to point out. There was kind of a long answer, which is, which is detailed and correct to the question about can this property be developed, and the short answer is no. So I just wanted to highlight that for anybody who's watching.
Thank you. Is, are any of the petitioners here, do they wish to speak? Are any of them present virtually? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this posi, this rezone? Sorry, the petition. Seeing none. Before I call for the vote, Ms. Krosilius, would you remind the public, I forgot to write it down, when we'll be having the next public meeting about the CDO, Comprehensive Development Ordinance? I know it's in March, but I forgot to write it down.
Let me look that up for you, and I will, actually, our director here is online.
Yes.
Yeah, I can also do that. So the, the next meeting for the focus groups for the CDO is going to be March 23 at 5:30 PM. We do have all the information now uploaded on the monroecdo.com website, so for anyone that wishes to take a look at the three focus group options and log into the Zoom link, it'll be, it's online now.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. It was my, my failing. With that, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll on this ordinance?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Krosilius. So let's move on. We have some appointments today, I believe.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for two different appointments. The first is for the Airport Board, Alan Boyd. The second is for- The second is for the Traffic Commission, and it is Scott Ferris.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to take any public comment on this? Good. Well, then, I'm in favor of these things, and so, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
It's really good that we have citizens willing to step up and participate this way. I want to congratulate the IU Women's Basketball Team for winning the Big Ten season. I hope that they continue on with their success. Also, wish to celebrate the IU Men's Swimming and Diving Team, who were named the Big Ten Champions. Having watched athletics with my own sons, I know that this takes a lot out of people. The next county blood drives are March the 8th, so next Wednesday, from 10 to 3 at Ivy Tech, and also March the 10th from 1 to 6. All of these are at Ivy Tech. Also, April the 6th, 10 to 3, and April the 7th, from 1 to 6. I'll remind residents that additional assistance is available through the township trustees. Every resident of Monroe County has a township trustee. The information is available on our website or within our regular meeting notes. So please, if you need help with rent, with utilities, with emergency medical payments, please contact your township trustee for assistance. I'll remind everyone also that the commissioners hold regular virtual office hours, six times a month. That also is available on the Monroe County website through our calendar at co.monegro.in.us. There is free COVID testing kits available at both the Health Department on West 7th Street and at the clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. You can also get COVID vaccines at the location on East Miller Drive. And we still have, I think, one or two openings for boards and commissioners, and so please apply if you are so inclined. Does anyone else have any announcements?
I just want to remind everyone that springtime is a time where we often have severe weather, and so it's a good time to sign up for our Resident Alert System. Go to co.monegro.in.us and click on the megaphone, and you can receive text messages, phone calls, and/or emails, your choice, to keep you apprised of any dangerous conditions.
It's interesting, in today's paper, there was an article about the fact that certain locations will often get hit twice in very close time proximity. So, yeah, just because we've had one doesn't mean we're safe then going forward. Commissioner Jones, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
I want to ask Ms. Purdy and Mr. Cockrell, do we have anything for our work session?
I know of one item that Molly wanted me to share with you at the work session.
Okay, well, seeing that it's 10:56, what time should we return for the work session? 11:05, does that work for you, Commissioner Jones? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Then we will adjourn our meeting of the Monroe County Commissioners. We will return next Wednesday, March the 8th, at 10 a.m. Thank you, everyone, for being here.